Consider ourselves in the August 4th Board of Education meeting for Hickman County District. And first thing we have, we do have a public comment tonight from Shelley Mahoney and Reagan Patterson.
And this is good. I know y'all always get.
We hold her great.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Shelley Mahoney and this is my son Reagan Patterson. I'm here today to express my deepest gratitude for the incredible journey Reagan has had through the East Hickman School System. From his very first day at East Elementary, we knew our path wouldn't be typical. Reagan was born with a disability called fragile X. That meant learning, communicating, and connecting may take more time, more patience, and more support. As a parent, I was worried whether he'd be understood, would he be included, would he be seen for who he truly is? Those fears quickly faded because from the beginning, the staff at East Elementary welcomed him with open arms and hearts. They didn't focus on what he couldn't do, but what he could, and that set the tone for everything that followed. At East Intermediate, those same values carried on. The teachers and support staff never stopped pushing him forward, gently, compassionately, and with unwavering belief in his ability to grow. They found ways to meet him where he was while never settling for anything less than his best, and he gave them his best. By the time he got to East Middle, something incredible happened. He believed in himself, and that's because for years, his schools had believed in him. At an age when things get harder socially and academically, the team at East Middle made sure he wasn't just making it through. He was learning, connecting, and thriving. And finally, at East Hickman High School, he became a young man ready to face the world. His high school experience was filled with the kind of support and inclusion that so many families in our shoes only hope for. He wasn't just a student with a disability, but a valued member of the school community with classmates, teachers, mentors, who cheered him on every step of the way. When he walked across the stage this May to receive his diploma, it wasn't just a moment of pride. It was a moment of deep gratitude because he didn't get there alone. He got there because of a village. This school system carried him when needed. I'm so proud of Reagan, but I'm equally proud of Hickman County Schools. So today, from the deepest part of my heart, I thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for supporting the teachers and staff who go above and beyond. Thank you for creating a culture where students with disabilities are not just accommodated, they're valued. Reagan's story is one of perseverance, yes, but also of a partnership, the partnership between a family and a school system that believed we could do this together, and together we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now we have a moment of silence. See, out of number, wait, out of number five, I need a motion to approve the agenda for our meeting tonight. Well, wait, wait a minute. We need to take a roll call. Can we do, we need a roll call for the board members. We're missing one.
Director Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Herron?
Here.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Baker? Mr. Hobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Here.
Yeah, there were budget amendments eight and nine, for some reason, didn't load properly. So Mr. Elkins has given those to you on, in writing. So it doesn't cause a change in the agenda, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Yeah, copies of that. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Out of number six, approve, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for the July 7, 2025 meeting.
I'll make that motion in 30 minutes.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, special recognition, Doctor Lawyer of the Month.
It is with great pride and heartfelt appreciation that we recognize someone very special, someone who embodies dedication, kindness, and a genuine love for our students and staff. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Tammy King, our incredible cafeteria manager, on being named Employee of the Month. Ms. Tammy does her job with a level of pride and care that is truly inspiring. From the moment she steps into the building in the wee hours of the morning, she's thinking not just about meals, but about people. Every child, every teacher, every team member, she doesn't just serve food, she serves comfort, compassion, and community. Her salads are legendary, seriously the best, but it's so much more than that. She goes above and beyond to make sure every student is fed, even those who might not find something they like at first glance. She takes the time to ask, to listen, to adjust, always seeking feedback from teachers and thinking ahead to meet the needs of everyone she serves. And speaking of thinking ahead, on field trips, she's already two steps ahead of the game. From saving boxes to make lunch transport easier, to making sure every child has what they need, she plans with care and precision. Our cafeteria runs like a well-oiled machine because of her tireless work ethic, her sharp attention to detail, and her heart of gold. But what truly sets Ms. Tammy apart is how deeply she cares. She knows the students. She watches over them. If she notices a child who's having a tough day emotionally, she doesn't hesitate to quietly and thoughtfully bring it to attention of a teacher. That level of compassion is rare, and it speaks volumes about the kind of person she is. Ms. Tammy, you are not only an outstanding manager, you are a trusted friend, a gentle guardian, and a treasured part of the CIS family. We are so lucky to work alongside you, and we are incredibly proud to honor you today. Congratulations and thank you for all you do. From the bottom of our hearts, Centerville Intermediate School.
We'll see the consent agenda items. So you see them listed there. There are some, if you ever want to see all the checks that, and boy, that have been signed and where they go to, there are always every month in the countersign, countersign warrants. And so, and then there's other things, personnel report, OPEB, attendance report. So there they are. Out of number nine, informational items requiring no board action. This is new. And so the first one is our, Mr. Elkins, our business officer, TISA state update.
So I gave you a hard copy, the financial portion, the final TISA allocation for FY26. We have four pages, two pages are two sides each page. First page, just an explanation on it, and you all probably know this, but that is the base, is $7,295 per student. And then the third column in there that you see is going to be the ADMs in each of those categories. The weights with our economically disadvantaged, concentrated poverty, small scars, and then spade category codes are in there also along with our ADMs. And then you have some direct related funding that does not go off the TISA base. The last column on that page shows the total TISA amount. That is state and local portion combined. Okay, so when you, when you hear of a weight of $7,295 being based, that's state and local. That is not what we get from state. That's state and local combined.
The numbers come in close to what you were projecting?
Yeah, and they give us, they start giving us updates in February so we can look at what our ADMs are to see if anyone's miscoded or our codes are not quite where they need to be. So it decreased a little bit over that five-month period, just where different weights would come in.
I know it's hard, it's hard to project because of so many variables.
Yeah, but it wasn't significantly. I think it was roughly $100,000 gross from the beginning estimate to the final estimate, was about $100,000, totally less. No, that's, that's a great question. Page two shows you some other funding in relation to CTE that is calculated in TISA. And again, that third column that you see in there is going to be the ADMs that are related to those programs.
Did that number come in better?
Yes, and we expected that to come in better. I think Mr. Mullins had communicated.
I know, had a big push on that last year.
Yep, right. And by going to the sixth period day, that opened more opportunities for CTE funding to come, or CTE classes to be taken. The final page, we'll see if I pull up this one. You guys can kind of read that. It's just the ADM portion of it. See the highlighted portion at the bottom? That is the state funding that is broken out. So when they budget, 70% of TISA is state, 30% is local. But then they go based off of Taster and Seaver to determine each school system's local portion. And you see, if you go five lines down from the top, you'll see Hickman County FY26 fiscal capacity. That's at 0.14%. And so they take everyone's fiscal capacity in the state and then divide out your portion of that 30%, and that's how they determine the local and the state portion of it. So our final TISA funding estimate from the state is $25 million, $38,237.05 for this school year that we're currently in.
Questions? If I get questions? FY25 budget close out?
Okay, I just wanted to update you on the closeout of the FY25, and some of this was included in the financial report in the consent agenda. On the first page of that financial report for FY25 showed you fund balance comparisons between the start of the year in 2024 and the start of this year, July 1, 2025. Basically, Crystal was able to close out the books last week as we got all of our revenue accruals and expenditure accruals and all that taken care of. We did hit fund balance at an amount of $1,275,972.34.
And remind us again, what was the projection?
The budgeted projection originally was about 2.5, 2.4 million. When we presented the budget, we told you at that time, we expected it to be somewhere around 1.5 to 1.4.
Yeah.
And so we came a little bit underneath that. But again, we did hit it, and that's a significant hit because I don't think we did anywhere near there.
And we're talking about that.
So that's the update on the 2025. Those books are closed. Of course, there can be some audit adjustments, and that will happen. But that's where those books are.
Thank you, Mr. Elkins.
Okay. Federal Programs Financial Update. Ms. June?
Hey, good evening, y'all. Um, just to get to the chase, the good news is that Friday, July twenty-fifth, late today, we received information that, um, the federal government had released Title II and Title IV funds to the state. So we are going to get to receive those funds. Uh, the state sent us an email update, um, over the, since last Friday, that said that they would release the information on the final allocations by the week of the eighteenth. So we don't know for sure yet, we have placeholder budgets in place, but normally when that occurs, it always fluctuates. So our number could go up a little bit, it could go down a little bit, but we will hopefully be seeing those funds pretty soon. And Title II, last year, what we received for Title II was a little over a hundred and sixty-four thousand. And for Title IV last year, we received, um, a little over seventy-three thousand, so that's going to make about a two hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hickman County Record Schools, Hickman County High School building, you're saying?
Yes, uh, we had, I guess it comes in threes, we had about three large air conditioners. They leaked three on, one, one of them leaked three on, the other one, the compressor went out. And so during the worst part of the year, during dead week, the T double S double A dead week, we blew, uh, we blew hot and humid air into the building, and, uh, it caused us to have some air quality issues. Uh, we have, uh, paid a professional company, they cleaned the building, they cleaned the duct works. Uh, they, uh, they're tomorrow morning, an environmental, uh, uh, an environmental engineer is going to do air, air quality tests and the areas that are impacted now, they're actually, the two areas that are impacted are subgrade. They're the, uh, they're below grade, the locker room, uh, in the gym, lower level, and then the band room is a lower level building. And, uh, so they, they were tested last week, and most areas were cleared except for those two, they did some more cleaning and put air scrubbers or machines that clean air, so those are going to be tested in the morning, and those areas are sealed off from the students and the public. And, um, the, the tests last week weren't that high, but they were still above where we felt comfortable and where our, uh, engineer, our environmental engineer felt comfortable. So we're on the cusp of having a healthy building again, and, and the parks that are open to the public are healthy. And I just wanted to update everyone, school starts tomorrow, and we're ready to have school, and that's, that's, that's what happened at Hickman County High School.
We learned from it, right?
We did, we did.
We're really, that. All right. Derek Nees, you're up here for.
A few things.
Yes.
Just wanted to update you on some of the projects that were going on, uh, the, the fence that you all approved. All these were approved by you with the budget, um, and the fence that's going around CES and CIS around the playgrounds, that'll be done tomorrow. Uh, East Broad Park got paved back behind the road that goes from, behind the elementary school to the middle school. So that got finished before school started. Um, the high schools, consumer science classroom, the company that won the bid has not worked in schools before, so we're walking them through all the background checks and all, so that's what we're at with them, just helping them get all the background checks done. And the career tech, uh, building at East High School, the plans have been sent to the fire marshal for their approval, and so as soon as they get approval from the, as soon as we get approval from the fire marshal, we'll be able to give them that. So, I'm just going to go with all those projects.
Yeah, the fence at the CIS and CES, it, it is ninety-five percent completed. Uh, so when Derek said tomorrow's, they will finish it.
Oh, they'll finish it tomorrow?
Yes, yeah, they're not starting on it tomorrow.
I was going to say, they're going to want to get their hands full.
No, they're, 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 they're ninety-five percent finished.
Okay, they didn't do it, they needed that for a long time. All right, uh, go, I was requiring board action. Bit of approval with TNA.
Share.
Appreciate it.
I would like to make a request to the board to approve an award, this bid for a walk-in freezer at, at Centerville Elementary School and, uh, award it to Mobile Fish.
Is this, uh, the original one in there?
Yes, sir.
So, this is a whole replacement unit?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That the evaporator and the condenser and the compressor, not all those parts can't be fixed?
Um, we went with the new way for everything, uh, I think this one is twelve years old, or I can't remember how old it is, but. It could be older than that, I can't remember how.
So did we not get any bids to look at repairing the mechanical part of it rather than replacing the box?
We have to replace the box because it's thawing out and freezing back, and it's busting out of the wall. It has got bad stuff in it.
So it's.
It's, it's.
Yeah, the walls.
Yeah, it's bad.
Yeah, okay, sounds like it's better, yeah. Okay, uh, the motion to approve, uh, TNA. I should approve the walk-in freezer bid.
I'll second.
I'll vote.
Dr. Koo?
Yes.
Ms. Aaron?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hobbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Thank you.
Boo. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, uh, ask you to please approve a membership to the Tennessee School Plant Management Association. Uh, it's where, um, Mr. Lynch, uh, gets professional development information from and, uh, gives his professional development hours. Uh, it's a resource that's helpful to us, it's four hundred and seventy-five dollars per year.
Okay, so Mr. Lynch utilizes this?
Yes.
Okay. Make this group, need a motion to approve, uh, TNV?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second.
Rock call vote.
Ms. Aaron?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hobbs?
Yep.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Koo?
Yes.
All right, Mike back with, Mr. Bell, it's back up, TNC, approval, this is important.
He said, back at the June meeting, you approved the Certified Salary Schedule, we always have to compare that to the state minimum salary schedule, and it's not unusual for us to have to go in and adjust, uh, a couple line items, we only had our pay steps, we only had to adjust one this year. The, uh, Master Zero was about two hundred dollars under the minimum for the state for an advanced degree. And, uh, so this is just adjusting that and asking your approval on that.
Need a motion to approve, uh, the TNC approval updated Certified Salary Schedule.
I can motion to approve the updated Certified Salary Schedule.
I second.
Rock call vote.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hobbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Koo?
Yes.
Ms. Aaron?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Okay.
Sorry to be, sorry. Just kept going.
Okay. Uh, DND budget amendments?
Okay, we have, have a few budget amendments to go through, budget amendment number three, uh, is a CTE Perkins Reserve, uh, grant of fifty thousand dollars, uh, that was applied for, um, I don't miss, I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure of what it is for, but, um, without Miss Turpin here, I don't want to miss the, I believe this is part of, uh, for stuff in our animal science program.
True.
And, uh, that has been approved by the state, and that's, uh, how that will be budgeted. Uh, budget amendment number four is an adjustment to our ATS I grant, and it was just some movement, uh, from the state where, uh, the dollars are the same, they just wanted us to change some of the, uh, salary line items, or they wanted us to add a salary line item in there, uh, but it doesn't change the pay or anything along that line. It, it's just making it agree with what they wanted us to put in there. Budget amendment number five is for the general fund, and this is just moving some of those dollars you have already approved. When we submit the budget to the accounting, we do not submit it with the cost center codes. Uh, and then we make those adjustments as we go into August and September. And so that's, uh, just allowing a tracking of the expenditures at a more concise code. But as far as what we report to state is always just the program and the line item number, not those, uh, cost centers like FRC, FRE. That's just for us tracking. Um, want, want to make a, um, thing about the bottom there, note about the bottom. Few years ago, we had a private donation, uh, in relation, we call it the mobile book bus. It wasn't just for the mobile book bus, but we try and track that every year and where we're at, so we're able to report to the person that had donated those dollars, and they continue to, they want to remain anonymous, and we're going to make sure we do that. But you will always see an adjustment to that every year at this time after we close out books. Uh, budget amendment six, uh, is also some carryover, uh, some grants that we received last year, the opioid grant where we had not expensed those dollars, and also part of the, a small portion remaining of the school mental health grant. So that's just allowing us to, uh, budget those back, and the dollars are already there, or part of the fund, but once, but that's allowing us to give the code on them. Budget amendment number seven, uh, per, uh, the situation that we had at Hickman County High School. We are moving some funds from capital projects, those capital projects, when we presented the budget in May, uh, you approved the capital projects that were in there, two of those we were able to do at the end of last year with the last year's dollars, so they still remain. This has allowed us to move some of those dollars in, just in case we need to cover in that line item at the end of the year.
Mr. Hobbs, the two that we did were the paving and, uh,
Paving and the floors.
Yes, we replaced the floors, and, and we did the paving with some last year, fiscal year's money, even though they were part of the year's budget, so that freed up the money to help.
All set the cost of the.
Yes.
Budget amendment number eight is budgeting the, uh, state bonus, that was approved by the state legislatures for teachers that met specific criteria. So this is not going to every teacher or every staff, it's only those that met that specific criteria, so we're budgeting that line item. I think our current thought is to process that with our end of the month, in August payroll. And all of that is completely funded by the state, including, uh,
Yeah, and, and the criteria, the criteria was, they had to work for a hundred and eighty, how many days was it?
Hundred and twenty days, more than.
More than a hundred and twenty days, and they had to be, uh, instructional duties, uh,
Have to be with students at least, have more than fifty percent of the day.
Yes, so that means like, uh, assistant principal would not get, get the bonus. And, and these were criteria set by the state of Tennessee, this money, uh, came to us, uh, from, uh, the state of Tennessee, they set the criteria.
Budget amendment number nine will be dealing with item F, uh, in, in section ten that you'll be dealing with here in a few minutes. This is moving dollars in relation to a psychologist's position, uh, from the, uh, teacher line item where we had, uh, dollars remaining and left over, uh, in the budget for this year. Approval of that does not mean you're approving the position, it's just moving the dollars in that, you'll still have to approve the position.
Intend you to approve it.
Correct, yeah, budget amendment can still happen, that is not cause the position to be.
Just puts us in a position, if we do approve to act. Okay, so. I'll make a motion to approve budget amendment three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
I second.
Rock call vote.
Mr. Hobbs?
Yes.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Koo?
Yes.
Ms. Aaron?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
You all were so efficient last month, we just have the one after second reading.
Today?
Um, and this is one that, uh, we talked about in, in past on first reading, but this is an optional thing, this is not something that the board has to do, talking about compensation guidance and contracts. Um, Mr. Mullins, do you want to speak to this, because we had talked about, um,
Yes, I can go ahead, thank you. Um, this is in case that a employee perishes while serving. And, uh, a, a, as currently, if you're teaching, you're a member of the retirement system, and you had a year's worth of sick leave and, and you were to, uh, pass away, that time would be sent to the retirement system. And that would increase your number of years of service, your sick days would increase the number of years of service, which would increase the amount of retirement check that your beneficiary receives. And that's, uh, that's customary. Um, this policy would, uh, this policy would compensate the district, would compensate a person for the, their, this, excuse me, the district would compensate the beneficiary for the number of sick days. Now, what's unusual about this, we don't know who people list as their beneficiaries. You know, so that, that creates. We would, we would know who to pay, and then, uh, the burden for paying people for the, for their sick days to the beneficiary would fall on the school district. So I, my advice to the board is to stick with the traditional process of letting the retirement system gain the number of sick days. Uh, I mean, it's, it's a rare occurrence, we, we, it happens, uh, we sat and talked through it, it had from, uh, I have some wonderful historians here in this office, and we talked through it, there have been people that have passed away during, while, while serving. But, uh, my suggestion to the board is to let the beneficiary gain the access to the sick days through the retirement system increase in years of service instead of the school district writing the direct check. So I, I, I suggested that, this, this is the, uh, this is a recommended policy by the TSBA. I, I, I suggest that we renew our policy as it is.
Okay, well, so the changes.
So this part would come out, and that's why.
So we won't, we won't.
The yellow part was what, was what was added last month, and then after, um, discussion and, and looking into this further, the recommendation to strike it.
Ms. Bowman has some concerns about the footage, Ms. Bowman?
Yeah.
To just lean to policy as it is.
Yeah, and Ms. Ms. Bowman, uh, who does a tremendous job, Ms. Bowman, uh, is, is the HR department. Her recommendation was the recommendation that I'm sharing with the board, as is Mr. Elkins. And we made, we made this decision collaboratively. If, if someone passes away, their, their beneficiary is still going to benefit, but they would benefit monthly instead of a one-time, and they would benefit monthly, uh, by the retirement system instead of a one-time check from us.
So you recommend, recommended when you make these check?
Or, we, we, last month at the first reading, we approved this with the change in there.
Right.
And then when we talked about it over the last month, we decided it's in the best interest that we strike this accrued lead and beneficiary payment by the school district.
Okay, so we need to vote on this with, with the changes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, I'll be the motion to approve TNE one, revised board policy five, five point one one zero. I'd motion to approve board policy five point one one zero. Second reading?
For second.
Wait, give us a rock call vote on that one, too, since it's, it's kind of the other ones.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Koo?
Yes.
Ms. Aaron?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hobbs? Mr. Hobbs.
Yes.
Thank you, and then up for review, we have six point four hundred to six point four eight. These are just up for review.
We've all had these for, and the review, has anybody got any discussion about these? Motion to approve the review of point four zero zero through six point four zero eight.
I make a motion, we approve the review of six point four zero zero through six point four zero eight.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Sheldon. Okay, right, talking about T S L uh, adding a position, which is uh, which is a serious, is uh, serious, uh, something to take seriously. Heard about the need, so, Bud, you, you got the vote.
Thank you, um, Dr. Totti, our Director of Special Education Services, Student Services uh, came to us during the middle of last year. Our, we have three school psychologists and their case loans have grown. Uh, the procedures have grown and then the window for which they have time to fulfill their obligations has lessened. So uh, we, we looked at this and we are in need of a school psychologist. So at the time when Dr. Totti came to us, uh, we agreed to let her post a school psychologist position, pending budget approval. And pending budget approval is synonymous with pending board approval because the board approves the budget. So, so we just tried to get out in front of it, school psychologists are hard to find. Uh, we, at la- at, at the last meeting, we talked about this and at some point at the last meeting uh, Ms. Aaron said, we have to approve this position. So tonight, Mr., so tonight, Mr. Elkins uh, has, we, we had a special education teacher. Uh, we down, we downsized the number of special education teachers at both high schools. Uh, when I'm, I'm talking about inclusion teachers. Inclusion special ed teachers are teachers who support children who are on regular ed curricula. They go into regular ed classrooms, students come to them for assistance. So we had four last year, special ed teachers doing inclusion at both high schools. And this year, uh, we have, we're going to have three. So we have downsized a little bit, which freed up the money for us to uh, afford to create a position. So the recommendation is to create a school psychologist position. Are there any questions?
And when you say the windows closed, it, it, it got, was it?
Uh, you should, uh, would you like to speak to this, may I mention that Dr. Totti's been?
Well, yes, yes.
So in April, the state said that our sites have, and our related service assessment um, providers had to provide, or their reports forty-eight hours in advance. And it happened as soon as the state said. So in the middle of a week, we were having to turn that around. So they have to, they, they have to have their assessment results and their report two days to a family ahead of time, and that was never like that. We were, we would go to meetings and present the findings. So a full forty-eight hours has really put the pressure on them. They don't stop over the weekends, they don't stop at nights because that, that clock is ticking. We are legally bound and we see more advocates coming to meetings, you know, we have a lot of eyes on, on those things. And so that's all of their assessment results.
When a, when a child is recommended for special services, they have to be tested by psychologists. And uh, up, up until April, the psychologist had until the day of the meeting to provide the material. And then a procedural change says, the state says, we have to give those parents that information forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. And it created a little, a little bit smaller window that complicated thing. But our special ed population is higher than we wish it was. And we, we hope to be able to uh, lower that through providing quality instruction. And uh, we have, we have, we have like twenty-one percent of our children, which is five or six percent higher than what is ideal. So our psychologists are very busy.
Any ideas? Do we have a motion to approve a psychologist, a new psychologist position?
I would like that question.
Yes. We have, second, May? Roll call vote.
Dr. K. I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted on. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and to the citizens of the board represents. My vote is yes.
Ms. Aaron.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Hobbs. Ms. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. May.
Yes.
May, may I speak, please?
Yes.
Yeah, and uh, Dr. Koo's, uh, Dr. Koo's conflict is uh, with the applicant that uh, we intend to hire. We posted the job in March, pending board budgetary approval. Uh, Dr. Totti invited all three of her psychologists to be a part of the interviews. Dr. Megan Evans and Stacy Alexa were able to make it. Courtney Crawford had scheduling conflict during the summer. And uh, we had two applicants and they interviewed both. And unanimously, the applicant that Dr. Totti has recommended to me, Dr. Totti and the interview committee has ready to me, recommended to me is Miranda Morris. And Miranda is the sister of Dr. Koo. Uh, I gave you uh, Miranda's uh, resume. Very impressive. She hasn't made a B yet in college. She made uh, four point O at Austin P, where she earned her degree in psychology. She was the outstanding psychology graduate in May of twenty fifteen. She earned a four point O in, in her masters and in her E D S at Middle Tennessee State, uh, where she was the uh, outstanding graduate teaching assistant. Uh, she has seven years of experience in Montgomery County. And like fourth page, fifth page maybe, it has the list. She is proficient in the use of fourteen different uh, assessments to assess intelligence, seventeen to assess achievement, fourteen behavioral, social, emotional assessments. Uh, this is a, this is a very qualified, a very distinguished and a very experienced applicant. And we're very fortunate to have her as an applicant. And uh, since you have approved this position and since the money is in place, uh, we're going to hire Miranda Morris to be a school psychologist in Hickman County School. And by board policy, I have to proclaim that publicly. So this is my proclamation of our intention uh, that we're hiring Miranda. And um, that will satisfy, I think, is policy one point two zero one, is that right? Uh, Ms. Sheldon.
Yes.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Remember, um, next one is me. Uh, this was my idea. This was, uh, Ms. Mullins's idea, this was uh, uh, so I'm just going to get, put that out there. Uh, and so first I, we got plenty of time, we're running way ahead, way ahead of schedule. So I want to put some uh, slides up on the board here. And look at some really great data for our school system. That I, me and, I think there's four board members that have been on here for the whole time of this, still with the board. And uh, and then the new board members was last year. Uh, but I just see some really good data, you can see it here. Uh, John, would you speak to this, you might speak to somebody, speak, speak to some of this?
Well, Mr. Lane asked me for this data. And first of all, I, I, I want to say this, this is not a criticism of the past.
Right.
The, the people that are on this team, they've worked hard for years here. And uh, so by, by showing the fact that we have grown is a celebration of the growth over the last two years. It is not a criticism of the past. And I always feel uneasy because I, I don't, I don't want to be critical of the past. But we have been able to uh, grow the, the uh, the red column is twenty-three, the blue column is twenty-four, and the maroon column is um, twenty-five. The first set of columns is English language arts, the second set is math, the third set is science, and the fourth set is social studies. Uh, we're, we're making progress as a school district and that is a credit to our teachers, that is a credit to our principals, and that is a credit to the administrators and the central office.
Okay. I mean, I'll be, look, it's just some really good data, uh, trends that look really good. And, and you look at this next, next one here. And this, I'm not being critical, I just know I was, my first year I was here and uh, we were the fifth lowest state ranked. And then, in one year, in one year, we, we come to the forty-seventh lowest. And I think there's what, a hundred and?
Forty.
Forty.
Something like that.
And with the data we just saw, we've, I feel, I feel good about what we're going to see on our letter uh, coming up. We don't know who's embargoed, as they say. And so, and so one thing I know about trends, I mean, I'm not a education person. I've been in sales and stuff like that, it's my, practically my whole life. And there's ways you can look at good trends. You can look at a lot of people's natural inclination when they see a good trend growing in a business, and this is a business. Uh, and is uh, you can sit there and you can say, alright, we've got a good trend going, we'll just kind of sit here, we've got it going. But, but the smart thing to do, if you really want to do, is see Hickman County School District become an exceptional Tennessee school district, which it can. Uh, you want to get behind in trends and push, you just don't want to ride them, you want to push, double down and push hard. And so, and then I got to thinking about, okay, uh, all right, uh, then we can see right here, keep going with C T E. This, this is amazing numbers here. We uh, East Hickman High School, three hundred fifty-one out of three hundred ninety-one students enrolled in C T E. And, and we, in uh, Hickman County, uh, Hickman County, three fifty-four out of three hundred ninety students enrolled in C T E. And you gotta give the new team credit for stepping out and pushing us to six periods. Now, that was kind of a, and I think that's enabled to do these numbers. It helps us not only prepare our students to go into the workforce, but it does bring critical revenue into our uh, system. And so we've seen really good gains here, and it was a team effort, like Mr. Mullins said, collaborated. And then, so.
Because that last, that last, yeah, that, that, those are the uh, career tech enrollments. And not only was it about adding another period, it was about putting career tech in the, career tech in the middle schools. But again, Mr. Chilton and Jennifer Turbin were, were very instrumental in that. But you can see that our career tech enrollment uh, last year went to an all-time high, twenty, twenty-five hundred and twenty periods of career tech instruction. And, and some children take more than one period of a career tech, so uh, and that does lead to more testing, I think.
Right, that's about, about average of five thousand per student, something like that.
I, I, I don't know, it's Ms. Elkins for me, I'll put him on that.
But anyway, it, this is another good point. And so we've got a good trend going. And I was sitting there, I've been thinking about this for a couple of months. And I'm thinking about, alright. It, it's a good, it's the, it's, it's the optimal time, in my opinion. You think what's going to be going on a year from now, if you don't do it now, talking about, I would like, I'm, I'm recommending, I'm making a motion that we renew uh, Director Mullins's uh, contract. That's uh, that's why I'm making a motion. And that will, it asks it start a new contract, can't extend it, that's by law. But it will start a new contract whenever we sign it and it will go to four years of January the thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. And what that does, that says to this team, that is, that's.
I don't think that's the right one.
June.
You said you weren't aware.
Oh, oh, June, I meant June, excuse me.
That's okay.
June the thirtieth was the end of our fiscal year. What that does, it puts certainty in place. There's some, there's a, we've got some external people that's come into the system. And we've got a lot of internal people that have been promoted. They have been, uh, there's been a couple of positions I've witnessed uh, moved. And they, both those folks were more acclimated to the positions they're in now. And so I just think that it would give us just, it would just steady the ship and, and, and keep us going in the right. I think it would, I think if we were to wait till next year with about eleven months ago, uh, our current director's contract, that it could stem into growth that we're, we're seeing now. It could, it could, I think that we could uh, lose some people. And that, and that's uh, I, I was, that, that's my record, that's what I'm, I'm making a motion to renew the contract for the director of schools, Mr. Mullins. And I need a second.
So, I'm sorry, so what's the rush on this? To approve, I mean, what, what's the rush?
Well, if you wait till next year, you will have eleven months, you'll be in an election year. And uh, that, this is not unusual. I talked to the uh, T S B A about this, Ben Torres, the attorney. He said it's, they have school districts, if they have a, a, a director of schools that's doing a good job, that they'll renew their contract every year.
No, that's what we could do every year. See, I've, I've been on this thing long enough that we've done this several times in the past.
Yeah.
And, and it's, until I do it a couple of times. So I just think, just need to leave it, come back in August and uh, or July, whenever. And then make that, plus we've still got some more data out. But we don't want the growth data, because we want to let it complete number. And there's some more stuff that'll be coming. So, you know, I just kind of, right now, kind of riding that fence. Uh, this shit, I don't know, this came up, but.
Well, that's my idea, I brought it up. I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the right thing to do for the school district.
I didn't want it to be brought up.
No, he didn't have to be brought up.
And it's embarrassing that it got brought up and we're disappointed. I mean, I, I am who I am. I showed up today and I worked, I'm going to show up tomorrow, I'm, I'm going to work. Uh, I, I hate that it got brought up and, and it's, it's to this point. I, I hate to be the center of attention. I, I don't, I mean, I'm in a job where I have to be the center of attention, but I hate being the center of attention. And uh, I just, it's, it's, it's.
Well, you're talking about.
Well, I, I, I don't know, I don't know what happened in the past as far as the directors and, and contracts. I just hate we're in the position where it got brought up and there's some uncertainty. Because uh, I'm going to do what I think is right for children, I'm going to work hard. I'm going to be accountable, starting with myself. And um, it's, it's. So I'm not going to say anything, I, I don't like being this, I don't like being in this position.
Well, let me just say this, just imagine, this guy that asked what to serve. You go around next year, there uh, and, and they're in an election year with all the drama of an election year. And you, and there're going to be more members out there running. And you got a, a, you got a superintendent of schools doing a good job. And he's put a good team in place, then why you wouldn't want to keep him, I, you know, I just, I don't understand. I was, I got a mo- I got a motion.
I will say this. When I applied for this job, I wanted to go back to work. And I felt like I had worked in places similar to Hickman County. in places similar to Hickman County before. I said that at a dinner, I still feel that way. For whatever reason, there were people that did not want me to have this job, even went to the point of trying to say I caused somebody to harm themselves, which was ludicrous. And I've been, I'm here, only county, only place in America I pay property taxes in is Hickman County. But no offense, Mr. Lane, but the way this has been managed and you're and and is brought to the table and you have chose to to move it down the road, it incentivizes people who do not like the changes that are happening in the school district. That's just how I feel about it. There there are people here that don't like the changes that have been made. We've made some changes. It there needed to be changes. No offense to anyone, there needed to be changes. I I just regret that it was ever brought up because I was happy coming to work, trying to do my job and now and now here we are, we're gonna wait and see next year. So so the message is gonna be, they tried to extend this contract and it didn't get done and that's painful for me. That's painful for me. Uh, so, I mean, it just is. And and I didn't ask Mr. Lane to do this. I appreciate Mr. Lane for trying. I I, the truth is, uh, the truth is, at some point, I would like to have a one-year extension of my contract because I would be, I would be economically naive to want to work four years and not work five years and earn a retirement check. I said that from the very beginning. I said that from very, from the very beginning. Here's the reality. I came to work today early, I stayed to work late and I did everything I could today to help Hickman County Schools. I'm gonna do that tomorrow, but but this process right here is it's not, it's not helping us as a district. And I want to say this, nothing that has happened, nothing that has happened in this district before I got here or since I I got here is not a result of a team effort. Life is a team sport. Running a school district is a team sport. Everybody in this room, everybody that works here, whether they drive a bus, whether they're a teacher assistant or whether they teach schools, we're all in this together and and the and the more powerfully we can be in this together, the better the results will be for our children. And this process has probably diminished some togetherness, which it hadn't been brought up. But here's the deal, I'm gonna show up tomorrow and I'm gonna work. That's that's what.
I brought it, I just brought it up and I think it's what's best for the school school district. That was like I said, I I'm I'm waiting to see where the rest of our stuff shows up there. Because there's some more stuff that comes out, shows where we haven't seen everything else. So. So you're saying we should wait another year? I just like, you can postpone this. We pull this up any anytime we want to. Okay. You know, if somebody else wants to redo it, you know, that's fine. I don't, I don't want to put him in a in a bad situation. I think it's meant to happen, but uh, this is uh, I feel bad because I'm not that, I'm gonna do that. We've had a good working relationship with her.
And we'll continue to.
So I got a motion, nobody wants to say it.
It's painful. I I didn't ask for this. It's a painful place for me to be. And and I I need to hush before I say it. I need to hush. It may cause me to reevaluate my situation. I didn't ask for him to bring it up, encouraging not to bring it up. Did I, did I, did I not encourage you not to bring it up?
Well, I get it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you didn't want like, like I said, if you wait till next year, that year from now, it's gonna be, you'll wish you'd done it.
Yeah, but if I said too much, which I, hey, I'm very aware of my weaknesses and one of my weaknesses, sometimes I say too much. I'm absolutely aware of that. And if I said too much, I apologize, but I but uh, whenever things get tense, I I feel like I need to speak my piece and I've spoken my piece. I'm gonna show up tomorrow and we're gonna have a first day of school, we're gonna have a great school year and I'm gonna keep working to do everything I can for the students and teachers in Hickman County. That's what I've done for two years and that's what I'll do until whenever I have moved on from for Hickman County Schools.
All right, item eleven, announcements.
Mr. Lane?
Do what?
Are we going to withdraw the motion?
Yes, yes.
Or table if you'd like to withdraw?
Withdraw the motion. I'm sorry. All right, we are having the, we're hosting, item number eleven, we are hosting the TSBA Fall District Meeting at the Hickman County High School. And that's a big deal, you know, we've been several of them. I've been, this will be my fourth one, I think. But as we we go to the surrounding schools and this year we were asked if we wanted to do it and so we agreed. And you can see the agenda, uh, it's gonna be September the second. Be there at four thirty for registration, be over at seven. Next board meeting will be.
I think, I think that if you read that carefully, Ms. Debbie wrote this, she wants us to be there at four because we're hosting.
Right.
The event, the event.
I'm not gonna be there.
The event starts at ten thirty.
I got some of those. Okay. Uh, right. She also said if you need any help registering, let her know. Okay. Next board meeting is September the eighth, twenty twenty-five. Annual convention is what she said, need any help, don't need that several. I think there's some of y'all that knows to that.
Yeah, I plan it because we we can take three delegates.
And so last, last year was three of us there. Year before us, there were two of us there. And the year before that, I think I was all of us. So it it's a good thing if you haven't been able to go to it. Uh, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of good clinics uh, that I've learned a lot from, that uh, they come about during this time and uh, they put on a big program. And you don't have to stay there. I mean, I drive back and forth because it's just easier to be uh, to do that and uh, once you do it or do it one day, whatever you need to do.
Saturday, Sunday, yeah.
I know it'll Sunday.
Yeah. Okay. So like I said, Ms. David said, as you say here, if you need help registering, let her know. Closing comments, legislative representative?
Nothing. Other than he's running for House Representative of US. We need to think about this because he's helped us. Because he talked about Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Yeah, community needs to get behind it because this gonna be a bad, this gonna be a bad book. I can tell you that it's gonna, it's an awful date, just go out there and, you know, a lot of people are not gonna know it. There's gonna be a lot of advertising, there's gonna be a lot of anything.
We got a good meeting at East High with.
Yes.
PM and the Education Meeting.
We did, he made that available to us, you know. He's got a lot of credentials, we're not known, but I think there's also twenty-one more of them did vote for her. He was outspoken about it and they jumped all over him, but he's got a very good chance if it takes a rule of systems. And uh, the rest of them, I think, will just beat each other up in the big towns. Yeah, item twelve B, board chair has not got anything. Board members, you, Ms. Kooten?
No.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Pah?
No, going to Seventh, which is Thursday, to the Law Convention at Jackson, like every year. And Mr. Mullins signed up for that, too.
How? Went last year.
Yeah, and catches up on the new laws and kind of explains a little bit more detail on what you can read. And they have some good things that come up and it's well worth the effort to go down there.
Chair? The side? Okay. Make a motion that we adjourn. Second. We adjourn, second. All adjourned.